Okay, I'm calling to order the Tuesday, December 15th zoning board of appeals meeting. It is seven, oh, I guess it's seven o'clock. And open the agenda by reading into the record in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 coronavirus outbreak emergency, the December 15th public meeting of the zoning board of appeals shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. The meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at lakeham.tv. So having said that, I'm just gonna confirm that Amy, you're on board with us, right?
I am. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we have a couple of petitions here this evening that are actually continued hearings that are the only agenda items on the agenda this evening. So having said this, I will, actually, let me just take care of one quick piece of housekeeping. I should be asking if anyone is recording this meeting other than Lakeham. If I don't hear anyone say yes or raise their hand, I'll assume they're not. And do we have all of our board members here? Can Lakeham tell me if everyone's? I can't necessarily always tell.
Hey, John?
Yeah?
Yeah, I'm gonna have to recuse myself on the first one.
Okay, I will take care of that in one second, Jeff. I just wanna make sure everybody's here, so we...
Everyone but Jared Noble is here.
Okay. All right, so reopening the Martowska hearing, as Mr. Youngquist just told us he is gonna recuse himself from this hearing. And I believe at this point, all of the members have been on all of the meetings. So where Jerry is not here this evening, the remaining members will be all, if we get to that point, voting on this, on this, this agenda petition. So I believe where we left off is the board had some concerns in regards to engineering, water runoff, questions in regards to, you know, if there are any significant issues as to why the garage structure needed to be placed where it was, other than the property owner's preference and aesthetics. So at this point, Mr. Martowska, I believe I see Kyle Devonish from Outback on, who I'm assuming is representing you folks. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, unless you wanted to make some opening comments, and please don't take this the wrong way. I think, I think everybody knows where we sit at this point and what information we're trying to get. So short of you having any additional information outside of what Outback Engineering is gonna provide to us, I probably think it may make sense for Kyle to start off the continued petition.
That makes sense. And if you have questions for me afterwards, we can go with that at that point.
Absolutely. Okay. All right, Kyle, so I guess at this point, I'm not sure, or I'm assuming that Martowskas have probably let you know a lot of the questions the board has had. And a lot of that is coming from the neighbors' concerns as well. So why don't you bring us up to speed? And then if we have additional questions, I'll call on the board members to want to ask if so.
All right, sounds great. Thank you. So as you've had a few meetings, I believe, on this so far, I was, Mr. Martowska specifically asked that I come in and discuss the drainage. We, what we're doing is, we're gonna, we're proposing to capture the entire garage roof area and direct it towards what, on the plan. I don't know if you guys have the plan with you.
We do. I mean, if you, if you have it and you wanna share a screen or whatnot, not, you have to, you're more than welcome to do that, Kyle.
Okay. I just haven't shared, so, there it is. Bear with me one second. Can y'all see that?
Yeah. You may wanna zoom in a little bit. There you go.
So what we're proposing is capturing the roof runoff from the garage, which will be piped directly to an underground infiltration chamber field, which is plastic arc chambers, which are embedded in stone, which will be their size to completely store the three-and-a-half-inch storm, which is three-and-a-half inches of rain in 24 hours. To address the driveway area, we're proposing sloping from the front steps down towards the front yard. The driveway would then slope down towards the proposed garage. And all the, the edge of the drive, proposed driveway on the south side will all be super elevated, so it will direct water into the front yard and into a Nyluplast yard drain, which will, it's a small, it's a small plastic grate that will capture the runoff and direct it into those chambers as well. These chambers are all sized for, to capture and hold completely within the system, the three-and-a-half-inch and 24-hour storm. As part of that, we are capturing, just because of the way the grading works, we're capturing a good chunk of the front yard as well, just because where it is. And there's a ridge, almost where that Nyluplast yard drain note is, there's a ridge on the site. Small ridge, but it still breaks the flow to the north and south. So by super elevating the proposed driveway, you know, it'll pretty much create a barrier, which will direct the runoff towards that catch, that yard drain. And then all the proposed garage runoff is going to that as well. The north, along the north property line, all the proposed pavilion and patio, that will be pretty much self-contained. And by the topography, heading down towards the pond, rather than to the north property line.
If you have any specific questions, I can hope to address them.
Um, I will, actually, do me a favor. Could you unshare the screen at this point? Just to help me figure out who's looking to...
Yep.
Okay, so I guess I will just, I'll take my normal course of action here, and I'll go around the board. And I'll start with Chris Carmichael. Do you have any questions in regards to the information presented at this point?
Just a question if the percentage of impervious areas been calculated?
Yes, it has. It has been, I checked with our server today, and that has been checked. It is all structure, parking, and paved areas are included in that percentage.
That percentage had changed at one point. I think there was an initial set of plans, if memory serves me correct, that had it over 25%, and now it's just under 25%. Would you be able to clarify as to what happened with those numbers?
Yeah, I believe there's a typo on the previous plan set. But the 24, the 75, 90 square feet has been double-checked and is the correct area.
Okay. Chris Carmichael, any additional questions, or you good at this point?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Nora, do you have any questions?
I just wanna clarify. So all the runoff, the rain runoff, calculates into that three-and-a-half inches per hour, correct?
It's three-and-a-half inches in a 24-hour period.
And it's, I'm sorry, 24 hours?
Yes. And all that is completely contained in the chambers themselves. So they can, they can store up, up to the top of them, that three-and-a-half inches in 24 hours. And that's not accounting for actual infiltration, which will happen. And so we can actually, it can actually handle more than that. But I wanted to make sure that it would, it could fill up to the top of them with three-and-a-half inches in 24 hours.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything else at this moment.
Okay. Chris Sheedy?
I don't have any questions concerning the rain capturing system. I think that should be incorporated regardless of where the garage is located. But in regards to that, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we're, we're gonna revisit a couple other things or get some public. So Chris Campo, any questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Kyle, do you have anything else at this point that you wanna add, or I'm gonna...
Yeah, I will add one final piece, which probably should have been the initial description is, the intent is to use the, we use the term mitigate, which is in order to, we're not, we can't make those conditions worse in, in the, for the neighbors or runoff. We're never gonna be able to capture all the runoff, because you'd be essentially either be creating a bowl on your property, or by some other means, capturing all around the property line. What we're, what the intent is and the general practices is to, what we call mitigating, which is deal with the proposed conditions to not make the situation worse. I just wanna make that clear, that it might have been unclear in our letter for what the...
So to clarify in layman's terms, for myself, if not anyone else, that what you're stating is the, the changes they're gonna make to the property, you're gonna worry about the water runoff from those changes. You're obviously not gonna be able to turn around. And if there are water issues, which is my understanding, there are in that neighborhood anyway, you can't take care of the water issues that were pre-existing, for lack of a better way to describe it, correct?
Exactly. We are, we, by default, where that Nyluplast yard drain is, it will capture some of that front yard, which isn't in our proposed conditions. So it will capture some of the actual existing runoff that's happening. But we are never gonna be able to capture everything. That'd be almost impossible.
Capture the runoff that's already there, is your point, correct?
Exactly.
Okay. Let's see, Mr. and Mrs. Martowska, did you wanna add anything else at this point? And I will, I will state that I know one of the concerns, I think, of a number of the board members was the fact that, obviously, the garage, which is, you know, obviously, there's other, there's another item in the, in the special permit request, but the garage seems to be the, the concern. And its location, did you have any other options or give any other consideration to moving it a little more away from the property line? Because I know that was a concern. You're unmuted, Mr. Martowska.
Yeah, I mean, I don't wanna be the dead heart from the past discussions. Obviously, I do feel it's best for everybody, the neighborhood as well as myself, with me being the primary beneficiary for my proposed location. If the board feels it doesn't, that's not consistent with the town bylaws, and that's an interpretation of the bylaw, we may disagree on that. I think for me to accomplish what I wanna accomplish, which is to minimize the blocking of the view from my neighbors and the appearance from the DeBoos property, they may not agree with my opinion on that. That's, they have, they're tied to their own opinion. So if they think, if they'd rather have that garage 20 feet from the sideline, and not even, you know, not even allowed to step back from the street, and push it back to five feet from the street, I mean, I'll have to live with that. And that would be the outcome. And then they would get what they, what they ask for. But I'm trying to make it better for me, not just aesthetically, but I think for the neighborhood, you know, it looks like more open space, for example. And for me to do what I wanna do in the front yard later on, including such things as someday, a space, oh, I'd say I'd have to replace that septic system, it's, it is an old system, it may fail someday, I need space to do that. And each thing put in there, in this case, this new tank and stuff with the runoff from the garage roof, the further I put it from where the leaching field is now, the more space I have for new leaching field should I need it. So I'm trying to accomplish kind of an insurance for myself to have more space to do things better later on, have things look better, and actually be more keeping the neighborhood. I mean, yeah, I have a bigger lot than my neighbors immediately to myself, and so I have more flexibility that way. But just as I wouldn't put that garage in the middle of my front yard, I'd rather put what we're proposing versus 20 feet from the sideline, you know, turn that angle a bit. But if I can't have it, I can't have it, right? I think I should get it. I think it's, it's better for the neighborhood. I think it's consistent with the character of the neighborhood that way. But I'm willing to go with whatever the board's willing to do for me.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments? And again, I don't, wrong way, neighbors and other folks in the community, we've, we've heard everyone's comments a number of times at this point, but I do wanna give anyone any additional time they need to make any other comments. So is anyone else who's in the butter or the Trebos? I'm sure, I was expecting you would have a comment. So go ahead, Mary.
It caught me the wording that Outback used about the driveway. And he said that it would be super elevated. That would, it super elevates my butt, just thinking about now elevating again lands that's sitting right outside of our back door for that turnaround and the driveway. So something that gets super elevated and then is pitched a certain way, how does, the only way something gets super elevated is by bringing in more soil and dirt underneath. So...
Mary, why don't you do this? Fortunately, at our request, Outback is here for this, so we can clarify that and find out, you know, exactly referencing and give us some, and as layman terms as you can, so we understand.
Yes. Sorry if super elevate was unclear. Typically, when we would deal with driveways or roads, I'm gonna, I'm gonna draw a little picture here. A roadway would generally look like, I don't know if you can see that, like that. So it's crowned. Rather, when we say super elevated, we just mean sloping from one side to the other. It doesn't mean actually bringing up in elevation. It would stay at a general elevation of the land there is now. It would just be sloped one way to, to make sure that none of that runoff's heading toward, you're the south of Butter?
Yes.
It would just, it was making sure that that driveway is not running towards your property. It's running very clearly away from your property. That's all super elevated means.
Okay. Because where that driveway is, it slopes right now downhill, you can tell by the elevations on the...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the topography shows that now. So what we would do is hold a high point on the south side of the driveway, and it would slope down to the Nyluplast yard drain. So it's just one slope. It's pretty, looking at the topography in our proposed contour, it's extending that 70 contour just right into the garage. So it's not, it's not like it's bringing it up a lot. It's pretty much at existing grade.
Pretty much, but, you know, like, we're dealing with an extreme situation, and we can't really afford any additional grade elevation. It's, that's how it is, right here. Our septic system is right below us, and our doorway is right below all of that. So...
So Kyle, is this, could, could you clarify? I know you, you mentioned before that, you know, you're not gonna be able to correct what has, you know, any runoff that is already existing. But the, the elevate, the super elevated you're referring to, is, is that designed to make sure there's no additional, or is it actually gonna correct a little bit of the issue that is there at this point as well?
So it's definitely to make sure that there's no additional. But by creating, holding that high point on the south side of the driveway, which it'll, it'll prevent that front yard area from coming down that way as well. It'll, it'll all be captured in that yard drain. So when you mention your septic, you're actually gonna have less runoff going to your septic, because we're cutting it off and headed, and directing it towards the infiltration chambers.
I mean, if you can guarantee me that nothing else is made higher, you know, and I just, I don't agree with the plan. I, I, I think it creates more of a detriment to our property.
Anyone else from the public have additional questions, clarification, promise?
I do, Chris. Bill Trebo.
Okay, Bill.
John.
John, I'm sorry.
Don't worry about it. I've been called a lot worse than Chris, Bill.
I won't tell you what I've been called. If I could speak to the Outback engineer, the number of, you call it impervious area, but on the site plan, it says structures, parking, and paved areas. Can you tell me exactly what makes up that number on your site map?
Yeah. It is the paved driveway, any roof area, so bit, house, garage, the terraces, the pavilion, the patios, that is all included in that. Retaining walls, anything that water would hit and not go into the ground or not go onto the ground is, is included in that percentage.
So the patio is down on the waterfront included?
Yes.
Okay. Is the area in front of the garage going out to the street, is that included?
Um, it's gravel. So I would think, no, I could double-check for you on that. I'm not certain of that area, just because it's gravel.
I think it was explained earlier in another meeting, I don't think you were on that, I think the other lady was on, that it was changed to not be included. So my question would be, what is the definition of parking area?
Okay, hang on a second, Mr. Trebo. So let me, let me clarify, let me try to clarify this. And I'll ask the engineer, that's what they're here for. Should, is gravel considered impervious or pervious?
Uh, it's, it's kind of in between. It's more pervious than pavement. So it allows runoff to go into it, rather than running along it and going somewhere else.
Okay. So in that, in that case, then, it would not be included in your calculations for...
Correct.
Okay. Do you have any additional questions, Mr. Trebo?
So you're, you're okay with that being include, not included in the, in the number, then? Even though it says parking? To me, it's probably semantics. But to me, it says, it doesn't say impervious. It says parking or paved areas. I think that should be...
Well, yeah, I'm gonna, at this point, I personally, I mean, every other board member's gonna vote, you know, or, or have their own opinion. But I'm gonna defer to the engineers and how they define what's pervious and impervious, what is pervious versus impervious.
Okay. Now, in that same area of the driveway, that's gravel, how is that pitched? Is that pitched down towards our property, or how is that graded? Let's get into the Outback engineer, please.
Yes, I'm just taking a peek at the plan here. So it looks generally pitched towards Edgewater Drive. And it's directing it more towards Edgewater rather than more to the south. So if your water drop was to fall just outside the proposed garage, run along the gravel, it would run perpendicular to that 70 contour and towards Edgewater, rather than, it wouldn't come off and take a hard right towards the south property line, which I believe is your north property line.
Yes. So if we go down the street, that's where currently we have a problem now of water running down the street to, to low areas. So it's...
Sorry, sorry to cut you off.
That's all, excuse me.
That gravel will allow water to run into it as well. It's not gonna be like a, like if, if you saw a paved driveway running off, it's not gonna be like that. A gravel driveway will allow for water to set, go through it, rather than sitting on top.
Okay. So the questions I have. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'll ask, does anyone else have a question or a comment from the public? And at the same time, I'll ask Lakeham to let me know if there are any questions through, through Facebook?
I do have one more question.
Hang on one second, Mary. Anything through Facebook at this point, guys?
Nothing from Facebook so far.
Okay. Go ahead, Mary.
We were concentrating on the garage, and rightfully so. But through all of that, I, I forgot to mention, there is a proposed property down by the water that abuts our property. And is there supposed to be a setback on the property line on a proposed patio of that nature?
Is there, you're asking me if there's supposed to be a setback on a patio?
Right. What would the normal setback be on a patio without a special permit or variance?
That, it's, a patio is considered a, a structure, so it would, it would fall in the same guidelines as, as any structure.
Okay. Well, I, we would object to that as well. We would like that on the, there's plenty of land under, they have a large lot, there's no need to put that right next to our property, in my opinion.
Which patio you talking about here at this point?
It would be the property on, down by the water, on this, the south water side.
Outback, could you pull, could you share that screen again, just so we can make sure we know what Mary's referencing?
Yes, yes.
I know the, the gazebo is on the other side of the property.
Can y'all see this, this screen?
I can.
Okay. I believe she's mentioning this elevation 57 proposed patio. Okay.
I would object to the other one on the, on the water as well. You know, is that supposed to be, should there be a setback from the water there, or, you know, naming property? I know they're selling, but still...
Yeah, someone can correct me if I'm wrong here. Hang on, Mary, someone can correct me if I'm wrong here. But I'm pretty sure, based on the fact that those are gonna be on Long Pond, that Concom has, has, would, would be more responsible for, for that than, than we potentially, what I understand is still within a setback. But the setback is designed, Mary, in most cases for safety reasons, so that buyer apparatus and people have access to the property. It's, you know, at this point, I would personally not be overly concerned about what they're doing on the water, because I do believe Concom, and they have to answer to more, more people in a lot more detail than we do. Is that, I'm gonna ask Amy, am I correct in making that assumption? Not sure if Amy heard me.
No, I, I did hear you. I had to unmute. And so, so did we know about these proposed patios before? Because the application is only for, I'm looking at the application, it's only for the proposed pavilion and the garage. So I'm not really sure where these came in.
You know, they were on the original plans, because I'm looking at the plans here. I just, I'm, I'm guessing they were not included on the petition itself.
So what is there now?
Mr. and Mrs. Martowska? I can't see, because you shared the screen, which is fine. I want the screen up, but you may be muted if I can't hear you.
Part of my problem is, you know, I went to the building, you know, Nate Darling on these things. And I asked about things like the structure and the stairway and things like that, and retaining wall going to the five-foot setback. So I tried to fill out the paperwork as, as it was explained to me. And if you notice, he doesn't even mention the retaining wall going within the five-foot setback. He just mentioned the pavilion and the final notice, and, and the garage, and things like that. But, but those patio, the thing else, was on the plans he had from day one. And, you know, those haven't changed. Only gonna change on the patio on the south corner there, it was actually, it was made smaller to get the, probably to help get that impervious area down to 25%. So, you know, if I had to amend my petition at this point to include those patios, you know, to do formality, then, fine, let's do that. But the Conservation Commission, as you mentioned about them being concerned, they saw these plans, even with the bigger patio, I mean, with these, with the original patio, and of course, I reduced it down to 25%. and of course I reduced it down to 25%, and they had no issue at that point. So, you know, I would hope this board would grant those patios as I'm saying it. I'm not sure where maybe once they put these patios, you know. I'm gonna have grassy area between the stairway to the lake and the two patios. All you, because you asked me to have a little strip of grass on the corner there, you know, somewhere, and a different patio area. I mean, I'm not sure what people want from that. And this is not an area that even, you know, particularly on the other side, the one on the north corner, for example, juts out into the lake.
Mr. Matoska, I don't think you need to explain anymore. I guess the question is, you know, were they on the original plans, and they were? So Amy, do we, the fact that it wasn't on the petition, is that an issue?
Well, there's a reason why Nate said that they don't need a special permit. So that's what I'm trying to figure out right now, these just came up. I think it's because they might not be an accessory building in the setback. So... So it's a nonconforming, that's right, it's a nonconforming, it's a nonconforming lot, it's a nonconforming structure. So I think this would be an extension of the nonconforming structure, whereas the pavilion and the garage are buildings, they're accessory buildings, and those fall under the, those fall under the special requirement for accessory buildings that can be with inside setbacks.
Okay, so I may have spoken out of turn or in error, and that we probably don't need to be concerned about the setbacks on those patios. More so than, I mean, logically, they're not impeding anyone from going anywhere or doing anything, so... And they are patios, I mean, as far as the impervious, that comes into play, but that doesn't have to, I don't think the setbacks are a significant concern. So what I'd like to do is if, I think we're good with the screen there, Kyle, if you don't mind, taking it down.
Yep.
Thanks, thanks. Okay, we've heard from the Butters residents, we've heard from the petitioner, we've heard from the engineer. I'm gonna go around the horn one more time with my board to make sure, since the Butters and public has spoken at this point, if they have any other concerns. If not, I'll entertain a motion if anyone's so inclined. So, Chris, any additional, Chris Carmichael, any additional questions?
No additional questions, John, thank you.
Nora? And you're on mute, by the way.
I do not have any additional questions.
Chris Sheedy?
I have no questions, Sean.
Thank you, and Chris Campo?
No questions.
Okay, so what we have in front of us here is a special permit petition to put up a gazebo and put up a garage, both of which are in the setbacks. Does anyone care to make a a motion to approve or approve with conditions? Or it sounds like Outback has clarified that, you know, as much as engineering is, can, or as much definitively as there is to mitigate any additional water runoff issues with these new structures going into place. And at the same time, the Matoskas would very much prefer to keep the plan the way it is with where the garage especially is set, but they realize that, you know, we potentially may suggest a a little more of a setback if not meeting the actual bylaws. So, having said that, what is the pleasure of anyone on the board? Is anyone inclined to be in favor of any of it?
Hey, John, this is Nora. I'm not inclined to approve the setback on the garage. I am, however, okay with the gazebo and the pavilion.
Any relief on the garage or stick to our bylaws?
I'm inclined to stick to the bylaws.
Would you like to make a motion to to that point, that you'd approve it, with the condition being the garage needs to meet the side setback bylaw?
You said that so well, so, yes, I move...
I said it well, but...
I move that we accept the current plans for the gazebo and the pavilion, but we not accept the relief for the setback on the garage.
How's that sound, Amy? Does that work?
That says, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have a second?
The motion is to allow the pavilion and not allow the relief for the garage.
Correct.
I second that.
Okay, we have, Chris Campo has seconded Nora's initial motion to accept the gazebo, well, let's put it this way, to accept the special petition with the caveat that the, there will be no relief for the garage, which is on the, which is the largest structure on the south side of the property. Any further discussion from the board? Before I call the vote, I do want to give the Matoskas the opportunity, keep in mind, and Amy, please correct me if I'm wrong, if this does get, if this does not pass, and it requires a supermajority, because it's a special permit, they cannot come back to us for relief for two years unless there's some pretty significant substantial change to the plan, is that correct?
You are correct, Mr. Chairman, under 48, section 16.
Okay, and the reason I point that out, and I believe the Matoskas are a little more familiar with our bylaws and how this works than most people. If you would prefer to withdraw without prejudice, I'll give you the opportunity now. I don't want to call the vote and then not have you have that opportunity, so... You have to unmute yourself.
So, yes, thank you, withdraw the garage setback, we keep the rest of it in play?
I'm gonna let Amy answer that. I think you have to withdraw the whole petition, right?
They do, it's an application, they have to withdraw their application.
Yeah.
One moment, please. We're not gonna, we're not gonna withdraw.
You're good, you're not gonna withdraw, okay. All right, so...
I can say one more thing, though.
Excuse me, Mr. Matoska, the hearing's over, I just, I was nice enough to give you an opportunity here to explain an option you had, but we've already, we've taken care of the hearing, we have a motion, we have a second, there wasn't any additional discussion, so I'm gonna do a roll call vote at this point. Yea or nay, please? Chris Carmichael?
Yes to accept the pavilion and not the garage.
Okay, so yes to the motion.
Yes to the motion.
Nora?
Yea.
Chris Sheedy?
Yes, to the motion.
Chris Campo?
Yea.
And I am voting yea as well. So the motion carries. And Kathy can unmute herself and tell us the process.
Not my usual organize here. All right, the ZBA is gonna try to get this paperwork done within two weeks, and then it'll be submitted to the town clerk. There's a 20-day appeal period, if there are no appeals, the clerk will sign it and it will be sent to you. Then you take the decision to the registry of deeds to be recorded and take the receipt to the building department if you need a permit.
Okay, very well. So don't do anything until that gets taken care of, Mr. and Mrs. Matoska, and that hearing is closed. So we will now go on to our next agenda item, which is the continuance of the Maxi hearing for special permit to raise an existing structure and construct a 26 by 57-foot office building within the setbacks on this lot in a business zone. And also a special permit for a sign that is 41.25 square feet in area. So I'm reopening the hearing, and I believe at this point, Madeline is on the call, and I believe, I saw it, Jamie, her engineer is here too. Madeline, are you gonna let Jamie present, or are you gonna speak yourself initially, or? You're on mute.
Okay, sorry, hi, Jamie will present.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Jamie, why don't you update us on all the points we, as my predecessor used to say, gave you some homework for? And if you need to, feel free to share the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, Jamie Bissonette, Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. And I am going to quickly share my screen, pull up the right item. All right. All right, again, good evening. A few weeks ago, we were in front of you for this project located at 149 Bedford Street, asking for a special permit to construct, to raise and construct a dwelling within the setbacks. And also to construct a sign that has a square footage larger than the town's bylaw allows. At that meeting, there were several items that were brought up of concern. Also, at the Lakeville Planning Board meeting, we also had items that were similar that were brought up, and we feel that we've addressed those items. We did receive approval from the Lakeville Planning Board last week, and I'd like to go over the things that we've changed and try to explain it, and then answer any questions that the board members may have. So I believe the number one concern that everybody had on site, on the site, was regarding the proposed sign. Let me zoom to about here. Originally, we proposed our sign in this existing driveway area. There was comments regarding the proximity to the intersection. What we've done is we took a look at the site, spoke with Madeline and Liam and the sign people, and we've relocated the sign down in this vicinity. What that did was that brought it from approximately 58 feet from the intersection, its closest edge, to approximately 184 feet to that same point. It's roughly 130-foot move down Bedford Street. Another thing that was brought up to us was the building itself, the proximity to the intersection and the setbacks. We're dealing with a site that has 40-foot setbacks on all sides. As you can see, the dashed line here, and here and here, actually, are the building setback lines. We presently have 1.6 feet from the corner to the property line. We, at the last meeting, we had our building at 15.1. What we did was we reconfigured the length and width of the building, and actually slid the building a little bit further back, and are now providing 19.3 here. And went from 18.7 in this vicinity to 25.2 here. Giving us more setback to the intersection and to Bedford Street, which I think was also a topic of conversation. Also, to be able to make these changes, we had to make some changes to the site. We had to switch from a full foundation to a slab-style foundation. What that did was that allowed us to get from 20 feet from the foundation to the septic system to 10 feet. As you can see, we have a few inches to play, but nothing really more than that to meet the minimum setback to the septic system as proposed. And what it also did was it made us so we had to change our ADA access ramps in this vicinity, and also how our foundation's gonna be constructed on this corner of the building. I believe, and I guess the one other thing that I'd like to bring up, not that it necessarily has anything to do with the zoning board's approval for those special permits, but the planning board, as part of their approval, they asked for us to place a couple more screenage trees to help shade, we have them coming down quite a ways down here. They asked us to bring them all the way down to the drainage ditch in this vicinity. So that is, that was one of the conditions that they gave us approval on last week. So, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to entertain any questions that you or the board may have.
Okay, Jamie, I think one thing I believe that we were looking for, and I'm not sure if you're able to get any clarification, had to do with, I don't know if I referenced Mass DOT or anyone on regulations as far as signs and setbacks and guardrails and all that stuff, were you able to?
Certainly, yeah, I've actually, I've reached out to a person named Nicole Bartholom, who's at District 5, Taunton District, and she's the permits engineer, who we actually do a tremendous amount of work with. Over the past two weeks, I've actually reached out to her several times, and she's usually very responsive. But I have not had a response back from her despite the calls and emails on this. So I don't have a definitive answer on the permitting component of this with Mass DOT. What I can tell you is, the Mass DOT portion for signs and approvals does actually take place with additional public hearing that happens in Boston, or at least that's how it was happening pre-COVID. And the regulations are actually pretty strict for billboards and signs that fall under Mass DOT's approval. But that being said, I don't have an answer from them regarding this. My my thought on that is that I do not believe that a sign that falls under local guidance is gonna trigger a Mass DOT permit here, but I'll get the answer from them for you.
Okay. I'm gonna actually, in light of your answer there, I'm gonna maybe ask if Amy could provide, because I do know there were quite a number of questions about the site, could provide any, I don't know, any comments in regards to our bylaw and how it pertains to signage, and I'm not sure, Amy, if you would have any insight as to whether Mass DOT or anyone would be involved with this. If they were, it would take it out of our hands, but... You on mute, Amy?
Sorry, sorry about that. The 2020 slogan, right? Are you on mute?
Yeah, no, that's, well, the problem, when the sharing the screens, I can't see.
I can't see, so... So anyway, I'm not sure if the intent of the sign is the same, but from our last meeting, the intent of the sign was to have, you know, third-party businesses being advertised on the sign. And if that's the case, then this would definitely be considered an off-premise sign. It would be considered, you know, a billboard, it's, you know, which is its own use. And so therefore, you know, we have an issue with the fact that we have one property with two uses. And so, you know, that's one issue. The second issue is that, you know, we need a special permit if there is a a sign, you know, an off-premises sign that bylaw has, you know, a a separate section on that, and it says that, you know, not advertising the premises on which located or the argument thereof, but it also says it must advertise a business commodity or service available in Lakeville. It cannot exceed 12 square feet, and it must be found to be appropriate for the location. So, you know, unfortunately, I'm not sure that this sign meets any of those. So we're now looking at a variance, which wasn't applied for, but and we would need a variance for the actual sign, and then perhaps even a variance for more than one principal, you know, structure, because it is a structure. So I guess that's a roundabout way by saying it is, it's problematic, I think. And I think it's the, I think it's the... I think it's the purpose of the sign. If the sign were just a, a sign advertising the business on the property, you know, I think, you know, things would be different. But because it is functioning as a, as a billboard, it's, it's, it's different. It's a different use, unfortunately.
One second, Madeline. Chris Carmichael, I think, did you have your hand up or did you want to comment?
Yeah, I did. I had a question for Amy. As it wasn't delineated in the agenda, probably, can we proceed with this?
Not to, we really couldn't change that, the fact that the board is now looking at a variance. If, if we wanted to go forward with this, with the sign, but, you know, but again, I'm not sure. You know, after the last meeting, I'm not sure if the applicant is still proposing the same type of sign, which was, you know, I looked back through my notes and the sign was that it's a marketing company and they would offer this sign to their clients. And so therefore, you know, we're looking at, obviously, unless the marketing company is going to limited, limit their, their clients only to Lakeville. You know, we're already looking at, at businesses outside of Lakeville, which takes it outside of the special permit requirements and, and yes, brings it into a variance, which, which we really couldn't hear tonight because it wasn't advertised at all.
Okay, why don't we, Madeline, I know you had your hand up and since you did have your hand up, maybe do you want to clarify sign or Jamie can clarify this?
I think I'd let Jamie handle it, but I can jump in, Jamie, if needed.
Okay, so I believe that Madeline's intention here is to have the office building itself be used as the headquarters for the advertising company along with possibly a real estate office or some kind of an office itself. I can't speak exactly to her conversations with Nate, but I believe, Madeline, you've had conversations with Nate and discussed with them the exact use. You could probably elaborate better than I could on that.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, please.
Yes, you're correct, Jamie. I have had many conversations with Nate beginning over, over a year ago when I had the concept of starting this business. I have already applied to the state. I have a, it's an LLC. It's called Exposure Marketing Group LLC. And the premise of the business is to have members, so they have some sort of, let's call it ownership within the space, the physical space and advertising at 149 Bedford Street. We will be able to offer them many, many opportunities such as a conference room where they could come and meet with their clients. We would have secretarial staff that would be there to collect any type of documents or whatnot for a small business. There are a lot of small businesses in not only Lakeville and I'm not looking to advertise just Lakeville properties. And this is the first time tonight hearing of this particular extension of the bylaw. I, I've read it. I've talked with Nate several times and that, this is the first time that I've heard that. My intent is, is to advertise to whomever wants to become part of a co-op, to offer small businesses the opportunity to have a nice location for their clients to come drop off documents, make fax copies, fax copies, et cetera. With the use of this as being part of this co-op, let's call it. And in part of that, we're going to offer them the opportunity to put their logo, their business opportunities that they present to the public. And I, I don't feel as though it's, it's a billboard. I understand the, you know, the likeness of it, let's say, but it is not a billboard. It's a business which Liam Conway, as a resident of Lakeville his whole life, me as a businesswoman in this area my whole life. I own the real estate office in Middleborough, which I plan to just have my portion of it be there. Not necessarily moving uptown completely. But yes, to run my business from this location to advertise my properties, et cetera. And it's, it's an excellent concept for a business. I'm proud of it. I'm excited about it. And I would really, I would really ask the board to, to ask me any questions if you have any because it's, it's a great concept and Liam and I are very excited about it.
Okay, thanks, Madeline.
So it sounds to me like the out of town business might be covered with the co-op having rental or ownership inside of the building itself, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm not a zoning enforcement officer and I wasn't privy to the sit downs with Nate. COVID kind of restricts situations a little bit now, but that might take care of the logistics of out of town business if they actually are renting a space in town.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, if it's rental space, the premise that you occupy, you don't need to own it, becomes your premise. I would assume so, but as, I'm not an attorney, so Amy, what do you think?
So I, I think that the concept of, you know, it's, it's, it's one of those, for example, one of those work local, you know, businesses where, yeah, you go in, there's a conference room, there's all kinds of things, but, but you're not necessarily, there's, I don't think there's a lease. I don't, I don't think there's, you know, so I don't think they're necessarily renting. They're, they might be renting it for a day. But, you know. I mean, what if it's for?
So, so let me, so Amy, it sounds like, I mean, if there were leases in place, things of that nature that showed that they were, they were occupants, is that, is that kind of what missed test?
I, I think that would be an absolute nightmare for Nate to have to try and enforce. You know, if he, if all of a sudden there's a business being advertised, does every single time there's a different business being advertised, does Nate have to go in and check and make sure there's an actual lease? The, the business itself is not, that is not at all what I'm, what I'm commenting on. It's, it's the sign, unfortunately, because the definite, it says signs off premises and it says not advertising the premises on which located. So you have a sign located on this premises and it's going to advertise for businesses that are not on that premises. And it clearly states, it says must, it says must advertise a business commodity or service available in Lakeville. And if it doesn't advertise a business commodity or service available in Lakeville, I don't think that this board can do anything without a variance request because it clearly, it says must, unfortunately. And, and, you know, it's not my opinion whether it's a good business or a bad business, you know, or a good idea or a bad idea. Unfortunately, I have to read the bylaw the way that it's written. And it, it clearly says must advertise a business commodity or service available in Lakeville.
And, no, I, Amy, you're, Amy, you're, you're doing your job and I, you know, I, I don't think Amy is commenting, I know Amy isn't commenting on the, the business itself or the validity of it or the, you know, the, you know, what her personal opinion is. It's almost like we're not supposed to decide on whether a house should be painted orange, pink, yellow or blue. So maybe not the best analogy, but Madeline, I know you wanted to make a comment and then what I'm gonna do is I'm, I kind of want to check back with Jamie, see if there's anything else additional he wants to add and then I'm gonna start talking to my board members and seeing what, if they have questions in particular. So Madeline, if you wanted to comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will meet the intent of the bylaw and I will, I mean, Nate and I, again, have talked about it. He endorses this. I know that he, I don't see his name on the screen right now, but I've talked at length with him and he is very much in favor of this business. And I explained to him from the get go that this is, this was going to be the concept of my business. And it's to help other businesses wherever they are located physically, but they are going to have an ownership or if you want to call it a rental agreement, if you want to say a contract, a lease agreement, I'll name it, whatever the board would like me to name the contract between the possible advertiser and the business. And they will have access, if you need me to give each one of them a key to the building, then so be it. I will give them a key to the building. But that was not my initial intent, but it was to, you know, they are going to have access if they so choose to do that and, and it will benefit. We will offer, you know, town endorsements. Jamie, help me out here, you know.
Oh, yeah, she's, she's talking about usage of the sign. She, there's going to be donated time to the town for things like elections, special meetings, zoning board meetings. So more people can attend, you know, things, things along those lines. You know, that, that come along with signs like that. She's, she's happy to have conditions from the zoning board placed on, in the approval. Again, I, I, what I think Madeline's trying to, trying to say, and I kind of understand, actually, I fully understand it, is, you know, if, if the zoning board of appeals can grant the special permit for the increase in size, the use of the plant, the use of it, she feels she can fully comply with enough where Nate will give her a permit. And if he feels that she's noncompliant, then he will shut her down.
Yeah.
Just like he does as if it's any other sign. If she was to shrink the sign by nine square feet, I believe, then she would just be in front of Nate dealing with this exact same thing. And so she's asking for the, the signed increase and she still understands she has to get the permit through Nate. If for some reason Mass DOT says, yes, you have to come in front of us and permit through us, which I don't believe that I'm aware of any sign on 18 that has needed that nor 105, then I believe that, then, then we will happily go in front of Mass DOT if that's required. But again, I, I tend to think it's not.
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay. Outside of the sign, Jamie, I think you presented the additional information that you had, correct?
Yep, the other one was with the building and we tried to address concerns that I know the board members here had and the planning board members had. Now, like I said, the planning board felt that we made substantial concessions and, and really stretched the plan the best we could. And we got unanimous approval last week. And again, we're hoping for the same thing here.
Okay. Let me, I was gonna say poll, but I'm not polling. Let me, let me ask my board members to, to comment or, or ask questions of either Jamie or, or Madeline or Liam, because Madeline and Liam are on the petition together here. So Chris, I'll start with you. I know you had already asked a clarification from Amy, but do you have any follow up questions? Or do you have additional questions in regards to the sign of the building? You had some concerns previously on the building.
Sure. And I guess my question would be posed to Jamie again. And Jamie, I'd like to comment. I understand what a challenging site you had and a lot of work and engineering went into it and kudos to you, sir. But did any thoughts going to rotating the access of the building to actually get more away from the road or did you, did you look at that?
We, we did, rotating the building 90 degrees.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we did. Yes, sir. We, we had a couple of issues, the septic system, the building itself, and then the accesses forced us into the configuration that we have to get the maximum separation. And so we, we looked at a number of, a number of different scenarios and, and a credit to Madeline, she, she's already had architectural plans drawn up. And when I came up with this revised configuration, you know, I had to break the news to her that she's going to have to have new architectures drawn up. But she, she agreed to it because it is a better fit. But again, for a septic with 10.7 feet off of our bleaching fields, we're pinned at 101 feet off of the abuters well. We're 50, 50 and 25 feet from the drainage areas. It's, it is, it's tight, like you said, sir.
Right, yeah, no, I think you've done everything you can. So I would commend you on that. So I have no problems with the, the building. I do have problems with the sign though. So if you want to continue on questions with the building, Mr. Chairman, we'll get back to the sign or?
Yeah, why don't we do this? Why don't we check, we'll kind of check out the, the building box first here, so to speak, and then we can revisit the sign. Nora, do you have any questions, comments, concerns over the building, the revised information Jamie's presented?
No, I do not.
Chris Shidi?
I think the building's a nice project. I guess my only concern would be the sign, so.
Okay, Jeff?
The only, the only problem I have is I was at the first hearing when we had the joint one of the, and I went to the planning board hearing and then I couldn't, then I got bumped out of the ZBA hearing. I could never get back in.
So that was your only problem? Well, that's, that's nice that that was your only problem.
I called the, I called.
I know you have more problems, so, but we won't get into.
But other than that, I mean, if, if you feel I can still vote on it, it's fine, but I.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm actually gonna have, you're not gonna vote on it because you weren't here, but I still, you know, I want to, as I always do, I get everyone's opinion because, you know, questions or points to be discussed, you know, just as valid from those who can vote on a particular petition and not, so. Any questions?
No, I have no questions. It's, it's, it's a good project, as far as I'm concerned.
Chris Campo?
I'm good as far as the building goes. Same concerns on the sign.
Okay, Madeline, before I circle back on the signs, I think you tried to get your hand up. Did you have a comment on the signs of the building or? You're on mute.
I, I was just, when Jeff said that he was not able to vote on this, I was just confused. I didn't realize that because he had missed one meeting, he wouldn't be able to have an opinion on this or vote on it.
Amy, can you explain that one? Because you're gonna do a better job than I am at it. The answer is no, you can't, but.
Sure, he, he can't unless he's signed a, an affidavit that he, you know, watched the recording, et cetera, and that has to be filed with the town clerk prior to him.
Thank you.
He can't miss one meeting. He just has to do all these other things.
That's okay. Thank you.
And we usually only, we would only end up going through that if, you know, we, we didn't have enough folk vote. And I believe everyone else on the, on the board who's here tonight was there for the prior meeting, so. All right, we'll circle. Any questions or comments from the public in regards to the building? Anybody on Facebook asking any questions, Lakeham?
Nothing on Facebook.
Okay. All right, let's go around again. Chris, now you, I think you had some more follow up questions, comments regards, regarding the sign.
Yes, I do. I have many concerns with the sign, especially how it was advertised, as we discussed earlier. No variance. I, and I just don't think it meets the, the general purpose of the bylaw. This, you know, size, colors, motions, lighting, inappropriate locations. I think it, you know, 6.6, 2.2, no illumination, any portion, create a hazard to traffic hazard. You know, there's several areas that I have grave concerns about. I just, again, all for business in a business district, but that sign, that location just doesn't work.
Nora?
Mr. Chairman, Chris kind of stole my thunder. I'm, I'm not in agreement with the size of sign being 23, about 23% more than what the bylaw permits. And then also with Chris pointed out, 6.2.1 of the bylaw states that any part of a sign which moves, flashes is prohibited. So I'm, I think a great job has been done with that location. A great job was done in moving the sign for some of our concerns there. I am just still concerned about the size and, and the movable parts of the sign.
Chris Shidi?
Again, I think the project is a nice project. I think it'll be a nice looking building at that corner, but my concern is also it just has the appearance of a, of a billboard and especially removed now from close proximity to the building. It almost becomes a standalone type of advertisement structure and less about the, the building. And I, I do have another question. The, it seems like the, or the requests is for an additional nine square feet. It seems like the, or the requests were an additional nine square feet increase on the signage, but the street address portion of that sign is nine square feet. So I was kind of wondering why it was a necessity to increase the sign if your original advertising sign meets the criteria for the bylaw.
Jamie, can you respond to that, please?
I can. It was a preference, Mr. Sheedy. It wasn't a necessity. Actually, Mr. Chair, hearing, knowing that we need a majority, possibly a supermajority for a permit, we're gonna withdraw the application for the special permit on the sign and just ask to proceed with the special permit for the building.
Can we do that, Amy? Is that okay? Hang on, Madeline. Where they were applied for together?
You do have to. Yes, you can. Oh, no, it was one application. Yeah, no. So it's an application. So, you know, because the application has to be withdrawn. So I guess what I would, I would suggest that the applicant withdraw the, withdraw the application and then, well, I guess it depends. Does the applicant plan on bringing the sign back? If they plan on bringing the sign back in the same, you know, sort of configuration, they would be prohibited.
Yeah, let me, can I, let me interject here for a second, Amy. Jamie, are you looking, or, you know, Madeline, are you looking to potentially still bring the sign back and look to do the sign? And if that's the case, that, you know, to not have to go through the process again and expedite everything from scratch where it is part of the same petition, so we really can't pull it off, you may be better off continuing if you're gonna try to refine the sign or work on that a little bit more to see if it's more palatable to the board. But if you're gonna get rid of the sign completely, then I think to Amy's point, you'll have to start from scratch with just the, just an application. So I'm not sure what the intent for the sign going forward is. Does that make sense, Jamie, Madeline?
Yes.
How I explained, my explanation, that my explanation makes sense, and then you can let me know.
Your explanation makes sense. Yes, sir. Would you like to answer that, Madeline?
Well, I guess I just, I feel I'm a little bit confused because I want to know what is it that the board would like? Would it like, would it like the sign to be nine square feet smaller? Is that what, is that the deal? Is that where we're at right at the moment?
I'm only gonna answer based on the same things I've heard from the board. Obviously, if it was nine square feet smaller.
I would need.
We, you don't even need to come to us for that.
I don't.
Would deal strictly with Nate, unless there were some other aspects of the sign that forced you to come to us. Nate would refer it over to us anyways. So it sounds to me like the board is a little more concerned. Some of, it seems like there's a concern about the size, but more so about the content of the sign and not the content, whether it's good or bad, but the off-premise.
I don't want to say that. So there are aspects of this sign, you know, under 662.
Amy, you're pointing out on us?
Actually prohibited in the.
Amy, can you hang on a second?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, you seem to be, we can see you fine, but you're.
Sorry.
Your words are coming out.
Yeah.
Amy, you there?
John, she was pointing out.
Sorry, does it help when I take off my video?
Okay.
A little bit. Try it that way. Hang on, Madeline.
Say it again.
Actually, did we lose Amy?
I think so.
All right, well, let's give her a.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Chris, go ahead. What you have, question, you were gonna make a comment.
No, I was just trying to help Amy out. I did hear that she was saying that part of this was prohibited under 6.6.2.1. Any pot, flashing devices illuminated are prohibited. I think that's the point she was trying to make, but again, we'll wait for her to chime back in.
Yeah, I'd prefer to wait for counsel to, hopefully we get her back. Much better. Okay. Stop from the top.
Sorry, I was on a dying, my son's dying Chromebook while I was charging this one, so now I'm all set. So I think Chris probably started. So under 662, there's some general sign prohibitions, so, you know, and the moving, the flashing, the elimination, those kind of things that clearly, clearly wouldn't work with the way that the sign has been described.
Okay. Well, hang on, Madeline, I'll let you talk. You know, I've done this in the past with hearings to kind of give the petitioners some direction, and Madeline's question is more than fair. I mean, she'd like to know exactly what the concerns are, and what I'm gonna suggest is we can let her know what the concerns are, and then it may make sense if, it sounds like you want the sign, that you take to the next meeting, figure out how to get those concerns. You may even need to, you know, I would probably suggest clarifying it with Nate, and, you know, I can reach out to Nate myself on your, well, on the board's behalf here, and make sure everyone's on the same page as far as what the expectations are and enforcement, things of that nature. So, Chris, could you just clarify for the petition or what your major concerns are with the sign? If it's just size, if it's size, if it's, you know, if it's the flashing, if it's what's gonna be on it or whatnot?
I don't have a problem with her sign. I have a problem, I'm just interpreting the bylaw. It says it's prohibited because it's illuminated, proximity to the traffic, you know, I don't think it meets the general intentions, the general purpose under 661. Flashing, any lights, beacons, moving. So I don't think it meets any of the intentions of the bylaw. So I don't know that we can even, and they didn't ask for a variance. So, and again, we go right back to that from the beginning, so I don't even know if we can continue. Wasn't advertised properly. So those are my concerns.
Jamie?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Carmichael, I do understand your points completely. We don't feel that it meets the definition of flashing, beacon, or anything that falls into prohibited because it's gonna be an image that is static on the screen. It's not gonna act like a television screen. It's gonna be more, it's gonna be a sign that comes up and has the ability to change. So it's like a billboard or like a sign that's, that does have lighting on it, like every other, most signs in town. Mine may be the only one that doesn't have a light on it. But it would, it would change every eight to 10 seconds. It wouldn't have any flashing. It wouldn't be overly bright. It's set, and the sign people are here, they can talk about it more, but as the sun goes down, the dimness on the light, on the sign actually goes down as well. It's a smart sign, just like the signs have to be, or else there would, there'd be, there'd be an issue with it. But there should be nothing flashing, there's static pictures that change eight to 10 seconds apart.
Yeah, so even the eight to 10 seconds, I have a problem with. A lot of bylaws require it to be more at 10 or 20 even seconds, so it's not.
We're open to discussions on timeframe if there's something that would satisfy you.
And it's not just me. Please, don't keep pointing this at me. I think the other board or well are looking at this the same way. It's the illumination and the proximity to that light is my grave concern. I think it's a distraction. And I think Fire Department brought it up in their statement as well. So that's my concern.
Now, Mr. Chair, that was a question I was gonna ask. Did the Fire Department or Police Chief get back to you with updated comments?
The Police Chief did not get back to us with any comments in particular on this, and of course, I lost my, Chris, do you have the Fire Department's statement in front of you?
So this document has been written, so this is to the Planning Board from Michael J. O'Brien, Fire Chief, Site Plan for 149 Bedford Street, dated October 28, 2020. This document has been written to communicate the concerns about the site plan for 149 Bedford Street has been addressed in the revised plan. New creation of emergency exit for vehicles satisfies the needs of the Fire Department as long as the gate is secured with the Fire Department-approved lock and has kept clear of snow and other obstructions. The Fire Department has no position on jurisdiction in regards to the proposed sign. However, the Department recommends that care to be taken provided reasonable sightlines onto Bedford Street. So maybe I interpreted it a little bit wrong, but that's his statement.
Yeah, and if I may, Mr. Chair, that's the October letter. That was when we had the sign proposed at 58 feet from the intersection. So now we're 184.
Kathy, we haven't updated one. I apologize, I lost my screen here, so I can't read it. Do you happen to have the updated one that Mike sent?
I think it's the one that Chris just read.
Oh, so he forwarded, he forwarded us his October, okay.
It was the wrong date.
Okay. Yeah, and the Police Chief didn't, did not respond to it. I'm not sure that they actually have any purview over the signs, which would probably explain the non-response. So let me, let me move on from Chris, and I'll ask Chris Sheedy if he has any comments or any direction for the petitioner on his, on the sign.
Well, my two things on the sign are, I guess it would be an enforcement issue for Nate to determine whether it's a pseudo billboard and because of the, the, the distance from the building lends itself to, it doesn't seem to be the direct tie into the building with that, with that distance, and I guess, I guess the additional size of the sign is also an issue. The bylaw is 32 square feet, and I haven't heard what the necessity for the increase is, so I guess those would be my three objections.
Either Jamie or Madeline, I mean, I guess one of the questions you could answer at this point possibly would be the, I mean, obviously, I think Jamie referenced that it was a preference to have a larger sign, so I think Chris is asking, you know, why does it need to be larger?
That's what the special permit was for, John. We could have just done it without going for a special permit on the sign because we could meet the 32 square feet. We would just go for nine more square feet, that's all. And if I may, may I say something else?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate all of the conversation. I really, truly did not believe that I would get this much pushback on this project. I'm really a little discouraged, a little disheartened, but you know what? It is what it is, and I know there hasn't been a vote yet, but I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the way that this all goes. So if we withdraw the whole application because the attorney said we could not withdraw a portion of it, and we withdraw without prejudice, then we can go on a merry way and make new plans. But I could also leave the building exactly as it is, a residential building, and just rehab it. Would that be correct? And not do any of these changes to the building? I just want to know if that's, so I don't need, so all I'd need to do is go get a building permit to redo the building. I don't have to do a sign. I could just, I could sell it at that point if I wanted to. That would be correct, right?
It's correct. I haven't used it for more than two years, so no, I don't believe you could.
Yes, we have.
He couldn't, she couldn't, what? Rehab the building?
Business district, it's an abandoned use for more than two years, so it can't revert back to residential.
That is, I don't believe that that is, that is the case.
Okay, my opinion.
Amy, do you care to comment on that if possible?
So if the residential use is a non-conforming use, then.
It's conforming.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd have to look into it, but.
It's okay. I didn't really mean to have an answer tonight. I just, I just was trying to get all my ducks in a row, so I appreciate it, Amy. Thank you very much.
I'm guessing Madeline's point, which is taken, is that, you know, we have a blight, so to speak, in that building, in that property, incredibly into the setbacks. It's been an eyesore for a long time, and she could not correct that and do something else with it by right, by pulling the permit. We don't need to get into whether it could revert back to residential or whatnot in the building district, and she's gonna correct that problem. And I, my guess is, seems like most of the board is very much in favor and it sounds like they like what you're proposing for the building and whatnot. It's just the sign issue that seems to be the holdback here. So having said that, I do want to give the other board members an opportunity to ask questions or comments, so I'm gonna just, no order. Jeff, do you have any comments or questions?
No, other than that, what's there right now is, that has to go, so I'm, anything would be better than what exists right now, so.
Okay. Nora?
I can't vote anyway tonight, so.
Mr. Chairman, now my concerns I've expressed earlier just in regards to the moving part of the sign and the sign being larger than what the current bylaw permits.
Chris Campo?
Yeah, my only issue with the sign is more of the content and have to, having to believe any of the intricacies of the content versus the language that's in the bylaw concerning off-premise locations.
So I guess the question now is, is your, is, would you prefer to have us vote on the permit, I mean, pardon, excuse me, on the petition? Would you prefer to continue it to work more on the sign, whether it's, you know, getting, you know, comments from the building commissioner or whatnot as far as how he interprets enforcement and content? Would you prefer to withdraw without prejudice? I guess that question is, Madeline's muted, so I'll ask you, Jamie.
I think I'm gonna need Madeline to tell us exactly what she'd like to do here. I just want to make sure. And I believe that she's talking with somebody about it.
Okay, vote on the building, put conditions on the sign.
Well, you're asking us to vote. You can't, I mean.
I guess that's where we're at, with conditions. I mean, this is, we're just going around and around in a circle. I understand what the board is saying. They don't want my business, they don't want the sign. So I guess I'll just, I don't know, go for the building and go do the intent of the, whatever the bylaw says for a sign, without going through the special permit. So I don't know, I'm, whatever.
Well, if you don't want to go through the special permit for the sign, then, Amy, I mean.
Do I have to withdraw the whole thing? Or do I, can I get the approval for the building and conditions for the sign?
Amy, could we, could we vote approval for the, I don't see how we do conditions on the sign, but could we vote, could we vote for the special permit on the building and deny the sign?
Yes, you could. And I actually was just gonna, Mr. Chairman, if I may, if Ms. Maskey wants to come back with a, you know, a different sign that needs, you know, a different relief, you know, she would have that option. She just, she just can't come back with, there has to be a substantial difference between.
I don't want to come back, Attorney, Amy. I don't want to. Thank you.
So, yes, you can, Mr. Chairman. You can approve the building and deny the sign. It's all one petition, so it's just like you did in the last hearing.
Okay. It sounds like the petitionist's preference is to have us vote on. It sounds like the petitionist's preference is to have us vote on this this evening. So I will entertain a motion from someone on the board if anyone is so inclined to make one in regards to the building and the sign.
Hey, John, it's Nora. I would move that we grant the special permit under 6.1, 6.6, 3.4, and 7.4 to raise the existing structure, but we deny the permit to allow the sign that is 41.25 square feet. So I'm recommending, I'm moving that we approve the raising of the existing structure, the construction of the new building as submitted, but we not approve the sign of 425 square feet.
As submitted with the latest revised plans from ZENIT for tonight's meeting.
That's correct. Thank you.
Second. Okay, Mr. Carmichael seconds that. Any further discussions from the board? Okay, I will do a roll call vote, yea or nay, please. Chris Carmichael?
Yea.
Nora?
Yea.
Chris Sheedy?
Yea.
Chris Campo?
Yea.
And I vote in favor as well. Motion carries unanimously. Kathy, you're up.
All right, we're going to try to get this paperwork done within two weeks and then it's submitted to the town clerk. There's a 20-day appeal period. If there are no appeals, the town clerk will sign it and it will be sent to you. Then you take that decision to the registry of deeds to be recorded. And you take the receipt from there to the building department when you go for your permit.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Good luck. And I believe we do not have minutes prepared at this point, right, Kathy?
Yes, I did not finish those.
That's all right. No, don't worry about it. I just want to make sure I'm not skipping over anything. A lot of moving parts these days, so. Having said that, do we have any old business to come before the committee? Do we have any new business to come before this committee? I think we have a draft schedule meeting for 2021. Is that correct, Kathy?
Yes.
Did everyone get a copy of that so you can plug it in your calendars?
Yep.
Subject to change, as always, but hopefully not too much. All right, our next meeting, as it's stated on the agenda, is going to be again on a Tuesday. A lot of this has to do with just a lot of other meetings and virtual, at least in nature, going on with some, with the hospital properties. So I think we should be back to our regularly scheduled Thursday meetings in February. But our next meeting is January 19. Having said that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Nora, we have a second? Unless we want to stay here all night. I need a second.
I'm taking it.
All right, Jeff? All in favor? Chris Carmichael? Nora Klein?
Aye.
Jeff Youngquist?
Aye.
Chris Campo?
Aye.
Chris Sheedy?
Aye.
And I vote in favor as well. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night. Merry Christmas.
Have a nice holiday, everyone.
Holidays.